Install cost of NJDP daily operation electronic data. Their time period, duration of the operation of the gas treatment system. Availability, capacity, and cost of additional landfill. What we accept for waste if it were affected by excavation. And the gas monitoring data, including the borers that we wanted when we went to court to secure from the DEP last month. I think I need an extra panel. Fenimore landfill background. In 2005, and I hope all of you have looked at this report in 2005, I really do. 2005, the DEP contracted Louis Berger to do an immediate environmental concern assessment. And this is where they concluded. No conditions found at the site pose acute, immediate, direct threat to human health. Site does not pose an immediate environmental concern. What they recommended was periodic sampling of the potable wells. That was what was recommended. No condition around the perimeter of the site to result in acute or short-term human health exposure. The site had been closed for 30 years. In 2010, strategic environmental partnerships purchased the property from Gerald Industries. October 6th, SEP received the administrative consent order from the NJDP. Portion of the landfill was to be capped with intent to install solar power. No matter whether, personal opinion, no matter whether you saw, thought that was a good idea, this was not the right location. Information served going forward on the report. What we looked at to evaluate landfills with similar H2S odor problems. These included the Softley Field landfill, which was partial excavation followed by closure in place. The Warren Hills landfill in Ohio. No excavation followed by closure in place. The Softley landfill. You know, there are a lot of similarities with the Softley landfill. That included that it accepted CND material. It was unlined. It was impacted by hurricane debris. At that time, it was Ivan. It was in very close proximity to residential areas. It lacked oversight by a state agency. It was impacted by the import of wallboard associated with the creation of H2S. Owner used questionable operational methods. No current groundwater contamination. This is in their tests. Health concerns by the resident. Differences. Softley was an active CND facility for over 20 years. Fenimore has been about two and a half. Softley had significant issues with smoke and fire. Softley height exceeded terminated levels. Softley was potentially, was a potential site hazard to an airport and adjacent airport landing strip. Softley had significant stormwater management issues. And the ATDPSR, which is an agency of the CDC, actually came into Softley and provided ambient health consultation report. One that we have not secured with them. The Softley landfill tragedy and violations included acceptance of unapproved waste, odor, dust, exposed waste, stormwater management issues, security, landfill material migration off the site on private properties and roadways, hazard to airport site distance, H2S generation, aesthetics, potential property value impact, and the Florida Department of Environmental Protection assessed $255,800 in fines. In the information center today were two reports that were provided by Escambia County in Florida, which was the host county for the Softley landfill. I hope you guys have an opportunity. Those will be posted on our website and I as well too. This is what you had at the Softley landfill. You had fires. You had smoke. You had heavy equipment operating throughout the site. You had exposed waste as well too. It was a very, very difficult situation. The other thing I pointed out, this is the Softley airfield. This was the site of the Softley landfill. North Florida is flat. You had a huge mound, and then you had an airstrip. This shows the FEED permit. The blue line was the height and the elevation that was permitted. The dotted line is how high the material actually was. This is essentially what was removed from the Softley landfill. This line at the very bottom, 80, was your elevation prior to any material being arrived. So you can see that they still left a significant mound at the site. What they did at Softley is they excavated approximately 200,000 cubic yards. We went to the Purgito landfill and 21,000 cubic yards to the Timberland landfill. The material that was brought to the Purgito landfill was used to build an access code. They then came in with a turf cover system, which consisted of a foundation and soil, 50 milliliter liner, low-density LLDPE liner, artificial grass, one inch of sand, and the site was graded to pitch to detention base for stormwater. This shows the material that was removed. You can see that this actually came from April 2004, a report from the Public Works Department, Engineering Division, Escambia County. You can see that the vast amount of material was, excuse me. The vast amount of material was dirt. You had clean knit, clean wood, branches and stuff, dumps, concrete, grit, aggregate, and you had less than 1% of drywall that was removed in the site. The Softley landfill closure design consists of a foundation soil, the 50 milliliter LLDPE, the drainage nubs, which keeps the liner and the surface in place, and then again, they went with a, they worked with artificial turf on the site. I had the opportunity to visit Escambia County last week. This is, I'm standing on site on top of the landfill. This is the airstrip. This shows the detention swell. They're hard to see here, but these are two venting pipes. They are set up, right now it's passive venting of the gas. It is set up so if they have to put more active treatment at the site, they will do This shows the detention pond. Here's for the site. And last but not least, this shows a little visitor that we had on the site while we were there that day. So, I do want to thank all the people at Escambia County. They were really very, very friendly and professional, and I appreciated it very much in my visit. Warren Hills, this is the site in Ohio. The Warren Hills site, they have routine H2S monitoring. Site's security was an issue. Treatment of leachate began in April 2006. Capped in May, June 2006. Surrounding detention ponds filled with clay. Mazer reviewed the closure documentation discussed at the time. You had 200 acre CND landfill until 2004. They accepted CND debris, over 70,000 tons of pulverized CND. They had improper CND maintenance, caused large amounts of leachate. EPA returned one section of the landfill required cleanup. Other two sections did not pose immediate public health risk. The landfill's cap was one foot thick, capped in place. Designed to keep rain smell soaking in. Stormwater management carries water away from the leachate. EPA removed large quantities of trapped leachate. EPA installed a system to continually remove leachate from the landfill. They removed, they collected over 13 million gallons of leachate, treated and discharged. In 7/26, this final site survey of H2 concentrations were done. At its maximum, you had 165,000 parts per billion in May of 2005 to 43 parts per billion in July 2006. And what we're going to do now is go over these quickly is the closure options. Fenimore closure option number one, stormwater collection and management. Now, I also want to point out as well too, when it comes to stormwater collection and management, that the DEP has submitted their plans to Morris County Soils and Conservation. A public hearing will be held of that. A public hearing will be held on that in the next couple of weeks. When I get the exact date, I believe it's the 21st, but don't quote me on that. When I get the date, we'll post it. Some of the issues that we have in regards to the stormwater collection that was provided, no estimates or costs were provided by the NJDP. Mazer estimates $150,000 cost for engineering and site design. They cannot calculate construction costs until design prepared. Mazer recommends implementation of regular testing of streams and groundwater wells in pursuit to a cap. NJDP scheduled to complete two feet cap by winter of 2014, 2015. We estimate, Mazer estimates, the expensive cap will be about $4.5 million plus approximately $100,000 a year in maintenance costs. Mazer recommends the cap and stormwater features to install fall 2014, and then complete it by 2014. We're all aware that at one time there were nine existing wells. They have now installed approximately 30 wells through the screen as recommended by Mazer. Quite a while though. Through the SEP deposited debris and debris, 1979 waste. Landfill gas rate for 30 wells is expected to be 1,000 to 1,500 cubic feet per minute. They're recommending up to three additional extraction wells be placed at the east toe to collect laterally migrating gases. Additional poly shell to be applied to the entire landfill after this work is done and before, after this work is done. Install more extraction wells if needed, depending on performance, and retain a microbiologist as an environmental. One of the key concerns about the operation is sulfur-impacted wastewater needs to be talked off-site. System operating at full capacity could produce up to 60,000 gallons per day. Currently, smaller quantities are being produced. About 7,000 gallons per day of water is being utilized on the site. So you have a summary, you know, you have a corresponding amount of effluent. Summary of the first year's estimated cost, wastewater disposal, the full operation is $1.6 million. Cost to remove is $2.3 million, I'll round it up. Power is $100,000. Water is $315,000. License operated for the site, the service is approximately $200,000. This is, this is a picture that was taken during the installation of the wells. The employee in the foreground is a Mazer employee, and they were doing monitoring on the site at that time. Okay. Option one, owner of the reliability issue. January 2004, reliability issues identified in treatment system. February, we had brief one-hour outage. I think you're all familiar with that. SO2, H2S at that time. April 2014, a pH instrument failed, resulting in spikes of SO2 concentration. The following recommendations should be incorporated in any closure. They include cost estimate for construction of a permanent cap on the landfill, cost estimate for the engineering site design, construction of stormwater management, install cost for NJDP landfill gas treatment, actual NJDP daily operational electronic data records, NJDP's installation schedule, the exact number distribution and depth of the wells, NJDP's time period for duration of operational, landfill gas treatment. How long does that take to be done? Operations. Or option two, total excavation. Mazer consulting analyzes options prepared by the NJDP and its contractors. Excavation of CND debris that had been deposited in the landfill. The idea is to ship it offsite, or dispose of another landfill, cap it in site to current NJDP standard. Option two assumption. 375,000 cubic yards of material from CND debris have been deposited. 375 cubic yards of material have been deposited. Density of the material is 2,000 pounds per cubic yard. One year for mobilization, excavation, restoration, and demobilization. 20 tons per offsite shipment via triaxle truck. $95 a ton tipping for disposal at another landfill and a 10% contingency cost. Option two costs. Cost estimate approximately $48 million. $34 million of this is tipping fees. Recommended is a tube-tended containment structure with a filtration system. Excavation likely to generate odor problems and truck traffic. 187, 18,700 trucks needed to ship specially designed truck covers. They estimate one year, 72 trucks a day. In a 10-hour day, seven trucks an hour. In other words, one truck every eight minutes. The more realistic estimate put together by Mazer is 30-minute loading per truck. 16 trucks per day, 20 cubic yards per truck, 235 days a year. That's how long it could work. With that timeframe, you have an estimated timeframe of excavation of five years. The following information is needed in order to complete the evaluation of option two. Availability, capacity, and cost of additional landfills that could receive waste should it be excavated and removed from the Fenimore landfill. Gas monitoring data during the excavation of the waste. Option three, limited removal of CND debris, high concentrations in H2S area. Operation three is a delineation of H2S high concentration areas during the installation of additional gas extraction wells. In 2014, Mazer recommends air monitoring should be conducted of waste removal. Borering logs should be used to prepare subsurface cross-sections. Sample of waste should be collected prior to insertion of gas extraction wells and then This is a side-by-side comparison. Section eight is H2S exposures in Roxbury. Rutgers University, Robert Blue Johnson Medical School, Environmental Occupational Medicine summarized harmful concentration level of H2S with regard to emanation of H2S from Fenimore landfill. Airborne levels of H2S reported at sustained levels greater than 100 parts per billion. All of you people know this, live in the area, and you smell it, it's over 100 parts per billion. If you saw and hear, we had how many times opened the rest of the center as well last year. The maximum amount of level that was detected was 1,100 parts per billion. At one time, two streams flowed, or two streams flowed around the landfill. The sampling of the streams did not show impact on the landfill. Again, we had all of our water samples, all of our stream samples, private well samples, and everything is in there during the presentation area. It's also on our website as well. Agency exposure criteria. There are probably a lot of people in this, in this room, who could quote this chart right here. So I'm not going to go over it, but they are, they are referenced there. And I know all of you are familiar with it on our website for quite a period of time. Physical characteristics. H2S is a toxic gas. H2S occurs naturally in sulfur hot springs. Natural gas is a product of decaying sulfur-containing organic matter. H2S olfactory threshold is as low as 10 points, 10 parts per billion. For some people, most people detected by the time it gets to 100 parts per billion. Exposure considerations. Monitoring stations have recorded frequent H2S excursions above a chronic US EPA level of 1.4 parts per billion, and occasional excursions above the ATDPSR meeting duration. Definition and further explanation of these levels is on our website. It was also available in the informational center as well. On at least one occasion, the H2S concentration exceeded the US EPA AEGL levels. Thus, even when an AEGL has exceeded, adverse effects of, create, are not exceeded, an adverse effect that causes stressful experience. H2S exposures in schools and possible interferences with the teaching and learning environment must be addressed. Conclusions and recommendations. Additional information is needed. We all know that. You came to this meeting, know that we needed additional information. You now know what some of the different information that you received. We need a horizontal and vertical delineation of CND debris, cost estimate for the construction, cost estimate for the new area, install cost for the landfill treatment, actual NJDP data, NJDP installation schedules, and I'm not going to be repetitive. You've seen them before. Conclusions and recommendations. Existing gas extraction wells should be either deepened or replaced with full depth of CND. A liner appropriated PBC pipe should be considered for the landfill gas collection in conjunction and concert with the extraction of well network to optimize gas collection. A program of regular testing of the streams and existing groundwater monitoring. As additional gas extraction wells installed, samples of the waste material should be collected and analyzed. Additional extraction wells to be installed as necessary until the H2S has been satisfactorily mitigated. Alternate access road should be re-explored. This came up very early in this. We had gotten some initial emergency permits from the DEP for the construction of this facility. The township spent well over $100,000 for the study itself. We have submitted that for reimbursement by the DEP. We're waiting to see. We've got those plans ready to go should the opportunity arise. Conclusions and recommendations. If waste material samples indicate high concentration of high sulfur content exist, evaluation of removal of the area should be performed. I.e., when they're out there working on the site, they find high concentrations, they should consider removal. NJDP should also provide their daily reports to the township. A final cap and stormwater management reports with NJDP regulations should be installed over the entire 18 acres of Fenimore landfill. The landfill surface should not be dispersed during summer due to increased likelihood of orders, odors. Capped and associated stormwater management measures installed fall 2004, completed by In closing, I again want to thank all everybody attended. Although this has been a very trying time, we always end all of our slides with the fact that Roxbury Township is one of the 100 best communities in the nation. Young people, you may laugh. I can appreciate that, but that is a fact. And a lot of our...
They've used to be at it before.
And we always end our presentations with that. And they ask me where I should be in tonight, and I said, yes, I should be. With that, turn it over to Mayor and Council President.
Quite abruptly, this Rass went to Escambia, Florida, actually did cost Roxbury, drove over to their certification from, from Lawrence, Illinois. If you didn't understand how dedicated he is to this township, hopefully that will somewhat of a sign of how much he cares about the U.S. about. Prior to going on to questions in public, and if the questions weren't professionals, I spoke this evening to the county council member here, and we agreed on this statement. So I'm going to read it now. The question tonight is which remediation plan or series of steps has the greatest potential to protect the safety and health of residents in Roxbury Township? To date, we have received information from the New Jersey Department of Wildlife Protection and from the township's own independent experts. In addition, members of the public have also provided the mayor and council with information concerning a permanent remediation plan. The state's analysis concluded that capping the landfill in combination with the gas extraction system is the best solution. The DEP asserts that removing the material will pose a substantial health risk to the township and to surrounding communities. The township's independent experts declined to make recommendations because they said they lacked the necessary data. It should only be provided by the DEP. The township's report, however, provided data that favored capping over trucking out material. Residents in the township have consistently argued that trucking material out of the landfill is the only way to ensure a permanent solution to concerns over air and water quality. While it is difficult to know for sure which permanent remediation solution would best protect and help and save you or residents, based on these facts, several things are clear. There has not been, to date, sufficient evidence or data that would indicate beyond a doubt that trucking material out of the landfill is the safest and most effective solution. While there has been some anecdotal information, some of which was inaccurate, the facts show that trucking material out poses some health and safety concerns. Despite information presented to the council to the contrary, there does not appear to be any evidence that trucking material out has been used successfully at other landfills, or that trucking material out is considered the most effective solution. Based on all the data collected to date, in every case, capping appears to be the preferred remedy along with the gas extraction system. As the DEP begins the process of developing a specific remediation strategy for the Fenimore landfill, mayor and council are committed to ensuring that the state consult with the township to keep us informed of the steps they are taking to correct the serious health and safety issues created by the reopening of the landfill. We will insist that the state specifically address the short and long-term concerns of residents concerned with air and water quality. They provide clear and detailed information about the stove through remediation project as well as the parties responsible for ongoing hazards. That ends my statement. At this point in time, I'm going to open it to the public. I will, as Mr. Rass asked, ensure safe work for fellow residents. Question asked for. We will try to... We'll give you three minutes. Give everybody an opportunity to speak and ask for professionals. You can address me or offer a professional for answering. And we can form a line, maybe five seconds, or a little bit of time. If you'd please like to. Next intervention, come off please. Say your name, add it to the record, please, so it's clear.
Bob McDeRis, 401 Pride, Ledwin, New Jersey.
Move that up a little bit. You're way too far away.
Right here? Oh, you're right. All right.
That's good. That's good. I'd like to see a little bit of that. I've got to take my places. I can't read. First of all, Mr. Rass, thank you very much for your indefinite report. You don't like to disagree with all the figures that your experts came up with. I have no clue where they're getting their fact sheets from, and I'd like to see a breakdown of their estimate because it is completely, completely inaccurate. All right, second of all, I'm going to read this one. The DEP claims to all the local towns that there will be 500 PDB potential capacity of gas escaping from the landfill. The DEP has opened up the door to a tremendous issue, therefore, for the DEP from their own mouth, a dangerous life in that situation, emergency issues are in Roxbury Township. The DEP needs to inform all 23,000 residents of Roxbury by registered mail, all the schools, all the nursing homes, all the senior citizens, that there's an immediate danger to everyone life or death situation from the Venmore landfill. The DEP has to develop a life and death emergency evacuation plan for the entire 23,000 residents of the town. The DEP needs to set up a hospital or clinic preparing to hold handle 23,000 residents from the gas exposure that they claim to all the rest of the towns in the community area. And if the DEP does not agree to this, I would go on the record that I request from the council that they follow up with this emergency situation due to the DEP's own statement that there is a life and death situation of 500 PDBs being exposed to the landfill. Now, they claim that it could be that it's done due to trucking it out, all right? I claim that it's not. I claim that it's more dangerous to keep it there. The landfill itself can be explosive. Explosive, and I've got fact sheets on this. The landfill itself can be a fire accident. It could explode from a battery in there, being that we don't know what's in there. A battery could be in there, and it could cause the landfill to detonate on fire. Therefore, the gases are going to come out, and we're all going to have to be evacuated. The landfill itself has some cases of explosions throughout the country, and I have fact sheets on that as well. Lightning can hit the landfill and detonate. Explosion, the gases could be escaping into the neighboring residence sewage systems, and I can see one man home, 40 years of construction, that doesn't allow, that's not waterproof. So if water gets in there, the gases have been in there. Therefore, you have a tremendous issue here that all pipes could blow up with the sewage system because of the gases exploding. It could get into their system and spark it, ignite it. I am recommending to the town, I am recommending to the council, and I am requesting that you send out a report to every citizen of this township notifying them that their lives are in danger as per the DEP's request. Or I request that you have the DEP revoke their statements to the rest of the town. Is there any questions?
Gentlemen, do you have any questions of what I stated about your estimate being totally outrageous? Where did you get your...
Over here.
That's it?
No question. I just thought, but if you had a question, that's impressive, and I have to answer. Just the cost estimates.
No question.
Do you want to answer the cost estimate aspect?
The cost estimates are based on industry standards. It's based on discussions with the DEP. It's a moving target, so the costs are based on full operation. Actual operation, if you've been keeping up, the design of the area is 300 feet, and you're operating at about 500. So the actual overhead cost now will be a little higher as you do when you build out. And some of the numbers, frankly, we don't have nothing provided using based on working at many of the landfills and talking to executives at other landfills. But they are reasonable, and I just...
Your cost estimates are way, way off. Your lower capacity of 200 pounds per ton is way off. Mixed material, 95 pounds per ton, and you can look that up right on the landfill. 95 mixed material.
Thank you.
All right, let's go. We'll look at the next story to Adele's Drive, Roxbury, Virginia. I was hoping a little of what Bob was saying. There's no reason in the world that you have not notified 23,000 people in this township. And they are being poisoned daily with this hydrogen sulfide and sodium fluoride. You say, well, all we have to do is look on the website. They don't know to look on the website. Why would they know to look on the website? There's things in the newspaper about it. People are busy. They say, oh, I don't smell it, so it's not there anymore. Well, it is still there. It's there for me, as well as people who live next to the high school, people who live near Kendale, people who live wherever any of these 13 monitors are, they're registering high numbers all year long. Those people are actually deceiving and just thinking that they're okay because you don't notify them. Why won't you notify the residents of this township what is going on? This is why we're down the road with the big class action suit, the same thing with the school. You should be notifying the parents of the kids that are in the schools that they are being poisoned in their desks every day. There's no reason that there should be a 10 parts per billion rule for the school. When those kids get off of the bus and are hung, it should still be 10. There shouldn't be a difference. There are still kids. There's still the neighborhood. Why haven't you notified the rest of the residents in this township? Are you afraid you're going to have a mob scene or something because you've been deceiving them? All this time, you've been deceiving them. You deceived us, the people who moved into Moonee Mountain, Poets Peak, Lookout, others, when you did not disclose that there was a dump, when you allowed construction to go where there was a dump, when people asked you straight out for information about areas of concern. You put down every propane tank in town, gas station, never mentioned anything about the dump that was, in some cases, 200 feet away from somebody's house. In my case, 1200 feet. Your Department of Health told you that you could not build around that landfill without disclosure to the buyers that it was going to be there. You are just as complicit as the DEP. You have to notify this township, the conditions that they've been living under, that you've been deceiving them about all this time. It has to be done. And to the schools, I request that newspapers write it up and put it on their front pages so that people in this township will know that they are being deceived by you and the DEP.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, your comments are not making accurate comments, but I'm going to disagree with that. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, residents, like all of you, have a little bit of a cold, so I'm sorry. My name is Kathy Simon, and I'm in the Saka Sana. I guess we're all here because we understand that we have toxic gas in what used to be a pristine, beautiful environment where we all decided to settle and raise our families. And I think that's why we're all getting very worried, frustrated, concerned. I'm coming from being a resident, a mom in the area. I've lived here for many, many years, and I'm going from the environmental side. The things that we know, that we've been told in our local government, they're helping us. We understand that it's a toxic gas, but this toxic gas can turn into something much worse, and it's called sulfur dioxide. What we have now is respiratory problems, nosebleeds. Capping it will hide it, will forget it out for a while, but in a few years down the road, this will come back out. It will surface in our air, it will surface in our soil, it will surface in our water. One of the things that you might not know is that the area surrounding this, I think they did mention the streams. We get our water from the Bererton Water Shed, and when this decomposes under the ground, and we all kind of forget about it because we don't smell it anymore. Incidentally, the smell will go away. The smell will affect your nose so that you won't smell it after a while. So you have the illusion that it's gone. You have the illusion because it's capped that it's gone, but it will decompose and rot under the ground, and it will come out in other sources. In maybe 10 years down the road, we're going to see the full impacts of capping. That was one thing I wanted to say. By the way, sulfur dioxide, the problems that can happen, they're going to be bad problems. Like, people are going to have, women will have miscarriages, reproductive problems, so it's real bad stuff. I just want you to look at that. Capping it hides it. Capping it doesn't make it go away. Obviously, our township wants to help us. They're working for us. They live here too. But the government is telling us it's less of a problem to cap it. But think about it. You're capping it. Now we have maintenance for all the years to come. If we cart it away, I think it's a bit of a scare tactic, that it's going to expose us and cause more problems. If we make it airborne now, no, the problems will be later. Get it out of our town. We don't want it here. It's not safe for us. That's just some of the things we have to consider also. I'll try to end this because I know a lot of people will want to speak after me. Another problem is the long-term sustainability of our township. We live in a great township. Everybody giggled then in 2011. I have that hanging in my basement. I'm so proud that Roxbury made the 100 best communities that I actually framed it, and it's hanging in my basement. I'm proud of where I raised my children. But that will be a thing of the past. The township that we know and love now will change. We have to think of the ecosystem. We have to think about the wildlife, the children, our waters. I was delving into the Bererton Water Shed exposures that will affect our drinking water if there's problems. And last but not least, the PDB pipes and the wells, they will crack over time. They will crack over time. We won't find out about the cracks until the problems are already in a very dangerous state. Then when we find out there's a problem and we've been exposed, we've got to think about how that will affect us. So don't be comforted by the fact that we've got people that don't monitor, because things will crack and there will be problems. I mean, the best thing is, no one else wants this, but to cart it away is the best solution to keep it here.
Thank you.
Good sir.
Yeah, Mr. Dean, 243 Main Street, Ledwin. I would say we're going to take a half hour to load a truck. If you need a construction manager up there, give me a call because it takes about seven minutes. If D8 up there, you push it, file a 10-foot front end loader, takes seven minutes to load an 18-foot ton truck. It doesn't matter if it's 18 foot or 34 foot, you can only carry certain amount of weight. It'll take you seven minutes to load that truck. Been in the business for 45 years. This is not a dumb smoke mirror, guys. He's wrong, 100% wrong. Two percent correct. I'm going to talk him.
Mr. Zeller, can you answer a question on the truck?
Yeah, well, he's correct. It was a normal construction site, which is probably a test to do, but this is a special site with hazards.
No, it's not. No, 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 no. No, no, no. Well, you put it there in a meeting. Yeah, you did. All right, go ahead. I've all them all. Go ahead.
Sure.
Yes, go ahead. Okay. The trucks would have to be sealed in line, and they would have to be loaded in a vacuum tank.
Absolutely right. I agree.
And talking among ourselves, other professionals, you'll be lucky to get, we figured, two trucks per hour out of there under those safety conditions.
You've got to hire them.
I'm not, you have to let people finish their comments.
Go ahead. Well, so far, it makes no sense. Go ahead.
So the...
I've been doing it 45 years, Jim.
Mr. Rose, you'd have to have dispos monitoring it, so very hazardous. And the most important thing is the safety of the workers there. You being a construction person, you know about OSHA, and that's taken consideration.
I've been living in it for two and a half years. I know about it.
The DEP's estimate was based on no interim controls. That's why when you saw that the map they put online a week ago, they had excursions where they went through the EPA model. They did not use interim control. They did not use attempting. They didn't use any of the precautions that this town would have to use for protection and human health of the residents.
I've all, what, hazardous material. And when they load the hazardous material in a truck, they're 100% correct. They do put a liner in that truck. But that liner is installed in that truck after your eight-hour day for the next day. It takes seven minutes to load the truck. I've done it for 45 years. I'll prove you wrong. You get the D8 up there, pile it up, and I'll come and load it for you. Is that simple? I've done it.
Hello, I'm Marie Felix, I'm in Compton Road. And basically, 48 million that you have in trucking it out, could you please provide a breakdown of that to the community? And further, you know, I know you gave your recommendation, but I would think by now, and I know you can't do it, but I think you should try to somehow go back to the courts and get a soil sample because I don't know how you can possibly... Bob, can we ask that? Okay, so I know, I know you've been busy all night. So in any case, we're watching. So in any case, I'm sorry, Jim, but in any case, I would want to know why you can make a recommendation when you really don't know what's in that ground. And I think that really bothers me. It bothers me as far as recommendations.
Better believe it.
And eventually, you know, some of this and that, you don't know. So no one can make a recommendation until you really know. And why is this such a cover-up? Can you hear my question? Thank you. And further, you know, I know you gave your recommendation, but I would think by now, and I know you can't do it, but I think you should try to somehow go back to the courts and get a soil sample, because I don't know how you could possibly- Bob, can we ask that?
No.
Okay, so, I know, I know you've been busy all night. So, in any case, we're watching. So, in any case, I'm sorry, Jim, but in any case, I would want to know why you can make a recommendation when you really don't know what's in that ground. And I think that really bothers me, I mean, it bothers these recommendations.
Better believe it.
And eventually, you know, some of this and that, you don't know. So, no one can make a recommendation until you really know. And why is this such a cover-up? (applause) Can you hear my question? Thank you.
I did it. Thank you.
Jeff Till, New Jersey Sierra Club. I've got a couple of questions. I'm going to start off with saying, I think the problem that you have in the plan for allowing capping is, one thing that's in that report that you seem to mention over and over again, and that is that you have to trust the D E P to give you information. The fact is that they have not been trustworthy. And they block you. The fact that when they came to this town and did their, I wouldn't call it dog and pony show, I think that's insulting to dogs and ponies. When they came up here and they told us what they were going to do, no matter what the public said, that was not information. And I think that is one of your biggest problems, that you're going to be trusting an agency that allowed this to happen in the first place.
Correct.
That allowed the materials to come in, that didn't monitor their own E C O, did not go away from the violation that we should have, then we have to go over to the state and if you think trusting them on this site will actually help the people in Roxbury, then I'll take you to Palm Springs Lakes, and I'll take you to Paul's World, I'll take you to Middlesex County. And if I refer to the other sites where D E P has control, where D E P has mishandled or mismanaged or totally bonched toxic cleanups, D E P's handling the super fun sites in Middlesex County that the P P A had to come in and take them away from. So, do not believe in trusting the D E P. Trust yourselves. Get to the bottom of this, have a real investigation, find out what happened here and why, have a real investigation, figure out what's on the site, and then come up with a real plan to protect this town and this community. I think that is really your charge, and that's really why I'm here today. One question I have, because it's so important, I've heard things about it, that supposedly Sandy Degree made them go out on the site, and we monitor Sandy Degree very carefully because the Sierra Club is very much involved in the Gulf Coast after Katrina. And what happened there is they reopened landfills, and those landfills became super fun sites. And one on Agricultural Avenue in Arrows, when they had heavy rain for Rita, they called it Datty's Inferno, it's heat football, toxic bluehead community. The concern that I had is, going through the D E P records on Sandy, I saw no mention of any Sandy Degree development. It's not part of their plan, two landfills in this state were allowed to take Sandy Degree temporarily, South Ocean County, Oakley County landfill. So I really think that you still have a lot of work to do, that this report has some good things in it, has some things I disagree with, there'll be more questions that need to be answered than answers to those questions. Please, do your job, make sure you get those answers, do not take any real, do not follow the D E P down into a dark hole of toxic waste. Please do your job and stand up for the people, I know you want to, but please, make sure you get independent verification and everything, and get your own data, and get your own investigation, and don't go forward until you get those questions answered.
Thank you.
(applause)
Mr. Till?
Till.
Sorry. Did the Sierra Club endorse this landfill closure?
No. We supported solar on landfills, because that's something I think is better than green. And we did, and that's one of the reasons I'm here, because-
Bring the mic up.
What? Sorry. We did, we do support solar on the landfill, because we do believe that it's a better place than putting on farm fields or bards. We never saw or endorsed any kind of plan. In fact, historically, the Sierra Club has been an outspoken critic of capping landfills or reopening, excuse me, has been an outspoken critic of closing policies in the D E P for the last 10 years since it went into place, reopening landfills to close them. We were very much part of the investigation, it was a head cap, and the debacle happened there. Did you write a letter to Mayor-
I have it right here.
Yeah, I said we support-
Yeah. The Sierra Club enthusiastically supports efforts to remediate and properly close the former Fenimore Municipal Landfill in Roxbury, New Jersey. We also support plans by Strategic Green Energy to transform that site into a solar farm, this is dated February 17th, 2011. This is better than turning lemon into lemonade. Landfills like Fenimore, polluting the environment by putting solar farms on them, will take environment light and turn it into a positive for the people of New Jersey.
That was, we just said- At the time that the town council planned, definitely seeking information about what the state was doing, you endorsed this project.
And, if you remember, I contacted you, and I had that email as well, asking, how could you support it when we haven't even seen a plan yet?
Again, you said-
And you said, I've seen the plan. And I said, well, then why don't you ask them to turn it over to the municipality? Remember this conversation?
I remember-
We're giving an email, so I had to walk.
Okay.
And who makes me sleep in here? You just-
When we, what, what we said, when we-
I care what he said, I care what you said.
Ma'am, whoever's picking up this-
It's me.
A lot of them are Tiddles.
Casper.
You go, girl.
Yes, sir.
When we found out, and I have an outlet too, that when it turned out that they were bringing in materials onto that site, which was not what I was told, we sent a very strong letter to S E P telling to remove our name from their lands from their, from their website. We sent a letter to the press, the press publisher, saying that we do not endorse reopening landfills and bringing material.
I know you changed your opinion, but it was a key to support the fact that early on, the process that did not include the municipality, that your support was by-
And it's also one of the reasons I'm here, because we want to make sure this site is explained properly. Yes, I'm here because we supported solar on landfills, it was a good thing, we did not really understand or see what they ended up doing on the site. And therefore, we're here to say, don't make those mistakes again. Yes, I will admit, maybe we shouldn't have done it, we saw something that we thought was a good thing, it turned out to become a nightmare, we want that nightmare to end, and that's why I- I appreciate those comments at the end, because, I'm quite sure this is not to embarrass you. I am-
Really? Really? Really?
You were the seed of the D E P, so was the town, so was every resident in this room. I'm not going to disagree, because I supported the legislation, giving them jurisdiction and any caution. So, yes, I agree, I feel like that having solar on a landfill would be better than putting on a green field, that taking a site and actually remediating a landfill that wasn't capped and doing it right. But to me, to remediate a landfill means you bring in blue clay, you bring in, you know, bentonite, you do it right. You don't bring in debris, and we've been very much opposed to that policy, the P P started in 2005. So, yes, we've all made mistakes, but now is the time to correct those mistakes and try to do it.
(applause)
Hi. Good evening, thanks for having this forum and giving everybody the opportunity to talk to y'all. My name is Ken Collins, and I live around here. And I just have a couple of questions. First one, I just noticed an issue with the figures. If you'll look at, I know you have a different hand out there, but on page 14 of what we've been given here, maybe?
You talking about the slideshow?
Yes, it's a 6.1 Fenimore Closure Option 1. It says capping. It's an N J D E P schedule to complete 2 foot deep cap by winter of 2014-15, no estimated cost provided. Major estimated cost ranging 4.5 million to cap, plus $100,000 a year in maintenance costs. Then if you flip to page 20, it says 7.0, comparison of cost for closure and excavation options.
Are you talking about the, the report or the slideshow?
The slideshow, and that was given to the door.
The numbers are different on the smaller versions than on the council. So, what section?
So, it says 7.0, comparison of cost for closure and excavation options. And it says Fenimore landfills closure in place, processed term E P M used by N J D E P, positell application extraction wells and scrubber system. And it says that that cost, which is the same closure, is 13,855,000 dollars in initial cost, and 4.5 million dollars annual O and M cost for an indeterminate period of time. So if that indeterminate period of time is what N J D E P informed us it would be at the Roxbury High School, which is a minimum of seven years, probably more like 10, you're talking 45 million dollars in O and M costs over a decade, combined with the almost 14 million dollar initial cost, that's almost 60 million dollars. To cap it and still have this waste in your community? So you're going to spend more money to keep it here. That doesn't make any sense. If you don't, if you don't know that after 10 years, you're going to be done, you could have 4.5 million dollars a year for 25 years, you don't know. And you're going to, you're willing to just go with that, that doesn't make any sense, I think, to me, and I don't think it really makes sense to anyone in the community. And maybe you could explain why it makes sense to you.
Thank you.
I have another question.
Mr. Collins, that's a great question. And what happens to these landfills is, is the concentrations, the mass, is reduced after a certain amount of time. Once they put the final cap on, the moisture content decreases, and the extraction is, say, 1,500 feet per minute coming out of landfill, dried up, therefore stopping the biological reactions occurring with the anaerobic bacteria. And then you're going to have a drop in the H2S level. And then they can change the technology, and Ed Putnam mentioned that at the meeting, I think it was Marshall Better, that they're going to go from this technology, which is fairly expensive, and I, being the former chairman of the PCFA, it's very expensive. And they recently switched over to PCFA to a technology, which is dry technology, called Iron Sponge. And they are very optimistic that they can make that switch this year. And I don't have the data, and I'm not going to ownership of their predictions and expectations, but I will say that the industry standard is, once one is below a certain H2S level, then we can, they can switch over, not we, them. Now, the reason they didn't pick that to begin with, and believe you, they looked at all the different technologies, the levels here were very high. And when that fellow from Genesis Tech said it was the highest it's ever seen, you know, it was the highest, I was told also, at 25%. But those levels are going to come down, really quick. And then they're going to be able to switch technology, and the point of my discussion is, not just to educate everyone, but the O and M cost will have a significant drop from this first year. And I wish I could have done a better job, but I didn't have the data, I don't think any of us, I don't think they do, probably look bigger they do. And, you know, the Sierra Club, Jeff, you know, he's right, in the sense of, we all wish we had better information so you could make objective, informed decisions. But right now, I can tell you, based on my experience with the other landfill that's happened to, over in Warren County, that they're all learning from, that they were able to switch over and the O and M greatly was reduced. And they still have a system online. So hopefully that answered your question, and it's a lot of-
Kind of vaguely answers my question, doesn't really give me any specific stories with it all, so it's, I don't know. Not really, but thank you, I appreciate it. My other question has to do with the immediate safety of every single person in this room, including yourselves. In the community right now, there are a series of monitoring devices to measure the toxic gas. And in the room outside before this meeting, I spoke to the president of Alacott, and I spoke to the Health Department person, and about the issue. And they both gave me blank stares and nods and no response, and that's very, very concerning. Because this is, I want to illustrate this issue for you. If that Mitsubishi projector is the unit that tests the air for the gas, and that unit measures an extremely ridiculous high spike in the gas that is absolutely dangerous to everyone in this room, right now, it doesn't tell the news. It tells a computer, unless you have a smartphone and the monitoring page open, you have no warning. And we're all passed out on the floor of this room, and no one's going to save us. And you're not protecting the community, these devices don't protect the community. And I would like to know what you're going to do to make these devices give off an audible, auditory, and visual alarm, so that people who are in a toxic cloud are warned.
You know, that's a good question, it's been raised many times by a lot of other people at numerous meetings, but thanks for bringing the topic to me tonight. In reality, we do have a fantastic alert system, like I said, it's one of a kind in the United States, but residents want a little more. I have talked to, and we will be meeting with, two firms who are interested in producing an app, and you can get on your smartphone that will alert you just as you request.
Again, can I ask a question of the audience? How many people in this room do not have a smartphone? How many people in this room do not have internet access at home?
Well, everybody-
I don't have internet access at home. So, if you don't have internet access, if you're walking through the woods in Veterans Park, and you don't have the website open on your smartphone, you're not protected. But you're walking through a tough department, there's no protection, and there's no warning.
That's right.
You have to fix that, and your community is here asking you to fix it, and so am I.
Well, that is one thing that we are looking at, so you can do that, and we'll continue to do that. How do we notify the president?
The president of Alacott, by the way, outside when I spoke to him, told me that they have lights for those units, so that they can easily install warning lights on those units, no problem, he told me himself.
Mr. Collins? You're welcome.
Hello, Barbara Giaquinta, 14 Mountain Road. I just, you know, we've been talking about this for so long, I know everybody's exhausted. I just was hoping that as our residents are talking, I was a little disappointed in the he said, she said, that was going on. I don't think it's time for an argument to say, well, you said this, and you said that, and you said this, I feel like I like to baby farm or something like that. You know, we're real people standing here talking to each other, and it doesn't matter who's to blame about what somebody said or somebody didn't say. The point is that the D E P obviously is not trustworthy, and we have all these things in here that say, well, in order to make a real, you know, prediction, we need to trust them, we can't. So, what are we going to do? And, you know, why can't, you answer people when they talk to you, why don't you just go, okay, I don't understand that. I haven't understood that since the day we started talking to panels. Why do we keep having to talk to panels when we don't get answers about it? We just get the same, like, okay, we heard you, you know, and that's it. I mean, we're-
We're trying to answer any questions you have.
Well, we're always going to ask you to let everybody in Roxbury know about this, and that still hasn't happened. So just simple things like that, just the little steps, if you could do some of those, contacting all the residents, so that we have more power against D E P, because the D E P will listen if our whole town stands up. If 150 of us or 20 gets down to 20 of us, you know, I'm going to be not being here all the time. We get tired. We have our families, we have our jobs. I mean, I've been exhausted being here tonight, I have two jobs, you know, and everybody else, I'm sure too, has the same story. So I'm just asking, that you do some of these things that the people are asking you, and the man that says it can take seven minutes, why can't he be right? Why can't you hire him?
Thank you.
My name is Stanley Podolsky, and I live in Sacasana. And it's been a brilliant presentation, but I don't want to be completely with it. I've been living in this town for 30 years or so. I've seen the good things and the bad things. And as we all know, there's a lake at the top of the New York City, right? And some years ago, everybody used to go fishing. My sons were fishing there for years. Now, nobody wants to leave, but go to the, close to the border. But everybody keeps saying that there's no contamination. And also, in the New York State for some time, they say, in the lock it out, there's no problem up there. The kids are running around, until some years later, they say, listen, my kisses die and die. Then, everything broke. And all we do is just, like, talking about it. It's easy to talk- It's easy to talk, but it's hard to do something. You know, how many trucks can you load in one hour? You know, it depends on the dump, how big is it? How many guys can you pick? You get a big truck, you load it in, it takes five minutes. If you get a little one, you load it for an hour. So, and instead of writing reports that are not completely true, and a lot of people don't agree with them. So, and if you wanna see what's in it, pick a couple holes in there, and the lights are still on. Simple. In one hour, you will know exactly what's in that facility. Mr. Fasting, it's murder. Why do we always react to the situation? We don't have money to fix things, but we have no one to prevent it. You know, people live on top of there, you can't bring out the way from it. Did they know what they were getting into, if they were buying the houses?
No.
And then people say, hey, listen, there's a dump down there. Did anybody say anything to them? No. So the town is complaining for this, so they should complain before. Listen, you know, you know what they're getting into.
Now, Bob Behr, twenty-three Lincoln Drive. I've listened to a lot of comments tonight. Some people got up and are like scared of other people. Just one example, this dump's exploding, getting on fire. What happens with methane? This is hydrogen sulfide. It's a non-explosive gas, so people, please, don't fear, you know, something like that. I've been in this town for a little more than thirty years. When I moved in, the dump was closed. There was never an odor from that dump. It already started to basically reforest it, there was drugs and weeds and whatnot growing. Didn't smell. Mount Road was barely a path. Poet's Peak was a nice wooded area. And I knew it was a dump when I moved in. And that's part of our responsibility as a home buyer, to check out the area. And then, you know, thirty years later, when the dump has been closed, it's never been an issue with it. And the D E P basically comes into this town and jams it to you guys and to us. There was no option. There was no choice. You didn't even know about it. No one knew about it, except the D E P and the convicted felon who was operating that dump site. Now, they should have known that, okay? The other thing, too, that bothers me about this whole thing, is what happened to those people. You know, they got promoted up, I guess, because they screwed up. What about that judge who kept negating, yeah, the fact that when the D E P didn't give their escrow money, and now all of a sudden, they wanted the judge to stop work? If she hadn't allowed him to continue, you know what? We wouldn't have this crap happening. Where is the investigative process in the state of New Jersey? Now, I may be totally wrong about that, but the point is, is that how could they allow this to happen at that end? And that dump was, according to the paper I just read tonight, in two thousand and five, it was taken off of the list of priorities. So there was no problems with it. So, the D E P, the state of New Jersey, starters. Governor Christie, was that gentleman who was speaking before, Kyle? Did you go to that Fairfield meeting?
Kenny.
Yeah, there you are. Did you go to that Fairfield meeting and talk to the governor?
I did.
Okay, I saw that video. The governor doesn't even know that that was a closed dump. He said they've been compiling stuff in there for the last thirty years. No, the last two years, it's your administration, who you're in charge of, allowed that to happen. And nobody says it. He was misinformed. Well, he's misinformed, he doesn't care about this. He loves it. He loves it. Right? And if he goes for president, that's what I want to. But anyway, just going to the point of, a lot of people have misconceptions about some things that were said here. And my original comment about the wells was, and this goes back to the previous meeting, was, it's a band-aid. And it is. However, I thought about it. When you dig up a womb, take off that band-aid, and you start digging at it, and start, you know, putting an abrasive blade in there, pulling some tissue out of there, you're gonna have a problem. And I do agree that if it's two years, if it's six months, that stink, you know, I will live on stinking drive instead of waiting drive. That smell will be part of it. So, my estimation is, is that I'm willing to give this, like, a try, but we gotta monitor it, and we gotta make sure that wherever possible, where the hot spots are, you have to pull it out, and you have to get a couple of days of stink, not two to five years of it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Angela Johnson, I live on three Roversport Road. Just a couple questions. First one about fires, because Mr. Zelli, I know you noted that in your report, that that was a softly fielded. And the gentleman, of course, said that it was a risk, but I just wanted to see if we could ask Mr. Zelli.
Yes, Mr. Zelli, if you may, just that question.
Do you have a crazy question, please?
What is your, what are your thoughts about the risk of fires in the landfill? Is it fire?
This landfill, highly unlikely.
Why is that? Why?
Eight thousand fires a year on landfills, and I got moved right here.
Mr. Zelli, answer the question.
I've been, the material at the site does not have a lot of organic content.
Baloney, baloney! I was on the site!
You already said that!
Please, Mr. Phil, Mr. Phil, answer the question.
You guys already said you don't want to. You guys already said you don't want to. Please, answer the question. He answered the question, you don't, because doesn't, is that the site?
It's common sense.
That's not true.
What's at the site?
Please, can't Mr. Zelli answer the question? Please.
The environment for combustion doesn't exist at a landfill because the fuel source is not there. That, the site that Chris went to in Florida was somewhat of a certain, different situation. This material brought on the site, you can borrow it to read the map. The Material Acceptance Protocol, there are seven items are allowed to read broadly here. Has everyone read that? Have you? No? Okay. Read it. It tells you that seven different items are allowed to be brought on your site. So the rocks, it's the glass, it's the C and D screenings. And for the most part, they do not have the organic content to start a fire. The dish needs heat, and then the temperatures that they're measuring the landfill are not high. Landfills I've worked with, a hundred and forty and up, they're barely over a hundred degrees in the landfill, again, from the data that we are getting from the D E P. I don't know why that, the comment regarding, there's a lot of very good comments here tonight, and I really appreciate some people doing their homework. The comment about the fire, to me, that is highly unlikely, and actually be the focus of this.
You wanna read it? You wanna read it? Right here. There's a homework.
My second question is just in terms of the ongoing maintenance, I think you had estimated four and a half million, and that was really for the water and the removal and all that stuff, but you mentioned some other things in your report, such as if they have to dig new wells, the water and air monitoring, and repairs to the scrubber and things like that. I mean, I guess I worry that the cost actually would be more than four and a half million if you factored some of that stuff in, or what's your experience in terms of how much that stuff costs over time at the landfill?
It's gonna go down. The cost will go down. Because as the mass goes through, the biggest cost is probably the costing. And the cost of use is gonna go down through time. And they're gonna switch over the technology, as I mentioned before, to Mr. Collins. And therefore, you're gonna have a reduction in the O and M.
Okay. And then my last thing is just a comment. My concern is just in terms of risk. I mean, there's a lot of risks, in just my own opinion, leaving it there, in terms of, we don't know if the courts can give this site back to SCP, if it's four and a half million, or even if it's three million or two million a year, who's gonna pay for that if the D E P decides someday that they don't want to, when there's a new administration or whatever? I mean, it's just, there's a risk of the scrubber breaking down and so many things. I just feel like that needs to be, I don't know, that needs to be factored into the analysis, not just the sort of, like, the best-case scenario, but like, all of the potential risks, and if you get rid of it, there might be a risk upfront. However, there wouldn't be a risk at all down the line, because it would be gone, and we wouldn't have to worry in the D E P.
Good evening, Phil Marco, Lazarus Drive in Ledgewood. I just wanna start out by saying that I don't care how much this remediation costs, because you can't put a cost on the health and quality of life of this room. So, I don't even think, and before I do mine, I just wanna clarify something. Just for discussion purposes, with the fires, Mr. Zelli, you said you believe there isn't a lot of organic matter in the landfill. However, isn't the presence of organic matter a requirement for the sulfur-reducing bacteria to exist and thrive? Mr. Zelli?
And that was in the back of the wallboard.
Okay, so that's your organic matter, is the back of the wallboard?
You don't need much, and I'm sure you've read your articles, being a chemical engineer or chemist, just the fiber in the back of the wallboard is enough to stigmatize the anaerobic bacteria.
When the trees were cut down on site, were they removed from the site, or are they buried within the material?
Buried.
Were you, no, the trees, a number of the trees were left on the site.
Mm-hmm.
So would that be, would that be considered organic material?
That would be organic material. Let me, let me give you a comparison here. Is everybody familiar with the Stump Factory? Nature's Choice? That is a, if you're not familiar with Nature's Choice, it's over by the Roxbury Car Wash, that is a compost facility. That takes, just what you were saying, stumps, material, trees, and emulces it. That's the type of facility that is prone to fires. Thank goodness, our fire departments have been controlling that over a number of years, but that's the type of facility that is prone for fires in this area. That's the type of material that was dropped off at the Softley Facility as well, too. A large amount of compost.
Didn't you say that sixty-plus percent of the material was dirt?
That's what was removed. Now, I didn't say that, not sorry. Let's be real clear. That came from the SCV account that they're presenting. So, that's what they came out.
Okay. Okay, I don't wanna dwell on that, but, you know, just to, you know, talk about the decisions that we're all making, I know that the township has taken their time in deciding on a position, because they didn't have all the facts. But I think there's a lot of facts that we still don't have the answers to, so I'm just having a difficult time understanding how we can make a decision. Number one, the D E P doesn't seem to be cooperating with the township. So what makes us think that they will, you know, modify the caping plan to what we deem is efficient? And, you know, number two, who's gonna guarantee that the D E P is going to be in control of the site for the next some odd years? Number three, unless the state puts fifty million dollars in escrow, how are we going to be certain that there's gonna be funds to operate the site and maintain the site available? Number four, Mr. Zelli's report indicated that from time to time, it may be required that there may need more wells dug, or there may need to be some modifications in the equipment. So how bad does it have to get for someone to get back on site and make those repairs or make those changes? Are we gonna have to go back and try it? You know, on what level are they gonna say, you know, Roxbury's suffering? And then the last question is, the downtime due to, you know, repairs and malfunctions? I mean, this is man-made equipment that basically has to operate a hundred percent of the time. Unless they design this around nuclear power plant standards and have a redundant train side by side for one extra capacity, I don't see how we can think that this plan will protect us. One day it's gonna break, and one day it's gonna need repairs, and we're going to have additional toxic exposure that we're gonna have to deal with. So, with all those issues, I guess unresolved, I don't know how we could, you know, move forward with any type of plan. You know, so let's go back to trucking it out. Again, I don't think that cost should be a factor, but there's a couple things that I did notice in the report. And I'm not scrutinizing your report, I think you did a fantastic job. I know that you were limited on time and the facts that you had presented, that you were presented with. So I'm not trying to scrutinize the report. The Softley Field remediation claimed that two hundred thousand tons were removed for thirty-five thousand ton, which is about seven million dollars. And the total purchase order for the excavation was six million dollars. So those numbers don't jive, but they're close. Our estimate said it would be forty, thirty-four million dollars in disposal cost, but a forty-eight million dollar total cost. So this fourteen million dollars composes of things that Softley Field didn't have to pay. So that's one question.
I get it, Bill. Well, because he succeeded his time, and I don't wanna get him back to him after some other residents get up, but rest assured, even if the trucking fees are different, we did not look at cost as a factor at all.
Okay. I understand. I don't run out of time, so let me continue, I'll be done in thirty seconds to a minute, I promise. So, you know, just to expand on that, a lot of assumptions were made, and I know they were made because we just didn't have the information. For instance, you know, the tipping fees. Is there a facility that exists that could take this material for less than ninety-five dollars a ton? I think there is. I know I've presented the heat to the township, I don't know where that stands, but if that site doesn't pan out, I think with this mass quantity, that's worth some research. Number two, the density of the material, as an assumption was made, and I'm not criticizing that assumption, it's a conservative assumption, but the truth is, for the other sites that have a reference in the landfill, when you converted the cubic yards to tons, the density of that, of those C and D finds was substantially less. And these two points will affect the total cost.
Thanks, Bill, but again, cost not being a factor. It's not a root anyway.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, I think what I'm getting at is that, I think the excavation option may be feasible, I just don't think enough effort was put into it. I think that if you offer, with Robert Zelli, to work with various experts, I think a logistical plan could be devised to remove this material. I mean, the conditions that are involved.
Bill, please. We gotta keep this thing back.
I'm not gonna.
That's okay.
You gotta pause.
Can I have thirty seconds?
You have thirty seconds, submit it again.
I'll come back to you, Bill. This is the problem with this township, and I've been civil to you guys until now.
Good for you.
We don't care!
Let him talk!
All I'm trying to say, I'll wrap it up in a few sentences, is that there are hazards in removing this material. It is challenging, I don't think that anyone here disputes that. But I think that if you look at the potential issues of capping it, and that those issues are not resolved, I think that we need to look into excavating this material, and we need to work with additional experts, and we need to find a logistical plan that will work to get this material out. And I think that if you spend another dime on anything, I think you should spend it on that.
Hi, Marina Hernandez, I'm from Dodge. I have a very, a couple of quick questions for Mr. Zelli. Did you work on the Warren Hills landfill with Mazor to the Iron Spur in the Warren Hills in Ohio? Was that a Mazor, it says the Mazor project?
No, I bumped in. No.
And I have a question, did Mazor submit a bid to the DEP to take care of the landfill?
I don't, I don't work for the state, no. I'm a consultant, and I do not work for the DEP.
No, did Mazor, the company, submit a bid to work on the landfill for the closure?
No. No, one, it'd be a conflict, and two, I wouldn't be interested in that work.
It was just a question. To the council, one of the reasons you stated in your statement that you left tonight was that you can't support trucking it out because you think that there's a lack of information with regards to safety and what could really happen. As became clear at the DEP meeting at the high school, the DEP has no record of using the geomembrin liner that they were proposing to use here, so my question is, there's not proof of efficacy and that it would not actually survive. They said that there's a, they did studies where it would survive for hundreds of years, but they couldn't really pinpoint any time where they had used it in a landfill in a situation like this. So, I want to know how you're okay with the lack of information on safety and efficacy of that plan versus the trucking it out plan? I mean, there's no information on either side, so I really wonder what your reasoning is.
They're going to use a low-density synthetic, forty-millimeter thickness, pretty standard, and the consultant that designed it, you know, they worked on many of these. I don't remember him saying they never, I think the one gentleman said he never worked on a similar landfill with H2S, but I don't think he said they didn't use that product for a capping. But regardless, they use it for capping, they visit for similar projects, and that's, we've actually, just so you know, I brought up some issues regarding making sure if there's differential settlement, that the stretching and the pliability to the material, and they are looking at those. So, there's a lot of questions that we bring up to the DEP that they look at. For instance, as Chris mentioned earlier, the additional wells, looking at the nine wells that are additionally installed, and replacing them or having placement of new wells in the area. There are several, they do consider information we give them, but the top liner, that is used, and that's pretty much an industry standard.
I thought the industry standard was blue clay has been out there.
That's not true.
Okay, can you provide the information of what the geomembrin liner has been used and how that's held up?
Well, you can probably just Google the design engineer for the landfill, and there's probably forty examples where they've used it. The problem with clay is it desiccates. When it desiccates, you could have cracks. And there's a very good paper written on this, Dr. O'Wais in Washington Township, Morris County, he used to be my boss, he's retired now. He wrote a textbook on landfill design enclosure. And the problem with the clay is, one, it's not consistent. It is a good base liner, and the reason is, when you put things on top of a landfill, there's what's called hydraulic conductivity, and that's how slow things will move through a substance. And you might have a three-foot clay layer, three feet thick, that has the same K-value of a little membrane. But if you're dumping a bunch of mattresses and some rebar and hopes through that, then all bets are off, but when you have a base layer and three feet of clay. At the top, you don't have the same concern. You're putting the material down, and it's actually very reliable, you can inspect it very easily, and that is the industry standard, and that's where things are going. The clay's also very hard to get up in certain areas, but the clay for a base liner, for a new landfill, for a top, they're using the right product, they got this one right.
Okay, I would like to see that information. I mean, I'm not an expert, but you say there's a lot of studies, and I just, that's again, lack of background information that's in the study, that I think people would appreciate seeing.
My question, I'm sure you're always learning a lot about landfills in the past two months.
Well, and my last question is for the council. So, you have these things that you think that if it's passed, that you have these recommendations and conclusions, and what we need, why do you suppose that the DEP will answer any of these or do anything in regard to what you want for these recommendations, when the DEP really showed no care about what's going on in this community? And also, what's going on with the injunction, or did you drop it? Is that, is that done? You dropped it? Okay, and is there any action planned, or are you just done and laying down now?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Is there anything planned to help this community, or has the council just decided that you're just going to lay down and let the DEP do whatever it's going to do?
First of all, fair characterization. On the advice of our environmental attorney, is the reason we stopped it, it was based upon the judge's decision. The judge was quite clear in his point of that the emergency order is going to trump everything. So, the practice of, you know, going through the practice of just doing it to do it is one thing, when we're being advised by everybody that there's zero chance. So, we stopped that part of the case for now.
Sure, I think part of the frustration of that is that we brought up that the emergency order cannot possibly be the end-all, be-all in law in New Jersey. There is the Highlands Council, there's the Highlands Act, which does have areas that cover a situation like this. And I think at the last council meeting, I brought up bringing those issues in front of the court. I know that the initial hearing and the initial submission lacked more substance than it could have had, which I think is a shame that the town wasted that opportunity. And so, I guess the frustration that I have is, the town has not brought forth its best arguments to help its situation, and it continues, that continues to happen. And I think that, I don't entirely blame Mr. Brouser, I don't think that he was put in a fair position, and I think that part of the problem is that the town council hasn't received proper legal advice for a long time. And I think that has to do with a lot with our town attorney, or the council attorney, whoever, however you want to call him. And I think a lot of residents are respectful of that, and also the continuing conflict of interest that Mr. Buco represents.
Ken Collins, again, I'm sorry, I did have two more points that I did to bring up, and see if I could get some answers from you guys. The first one, the gentleman in front row, he brought up the subject of methane. And in reviewing the original closure plan that was approved by NJTDP that SEP was supposed to implement, that was a requirement for NJTDP that SEP installed a gas collection system on the landfill to mitigate methane. Did it just disappear? Anyone?
You need to look at the 2005 report. It's very important. This facility was not a significant producer of methane. You need to look at the information, Mr. Collins.
Then why was DEP requiring SEP to install methane collection system?
That's the same reason that DEP first came out with an abatement system that was essentially torches, that they assumed was going to be burning methane. I can't tell you, anybody in this room cannot tell you the logic behind DEP, but I can tell you to look at their own 2005 report.
Well, I looked at their 2005 report, I read it all, and I'm very familiar with it, and I'm asking you the question because I read that report, what happened to the methane origin?
His answer was, the report 2005 showed there was no significant methane at all on the site.
Correct.
Do you know what year it was that DEP required SEP to put a methane system in?
It would have been 11 or 12.
Okay, so why would DEP require them to put a methane collection system in 2005? If it wasn't a concern in 2005? So, there's still concerns that there could be a methane issue? Even though you're saying there is? My other question had to do with the court fiasco in Morris County. I was there, I witnessed the entire thing, I've reviewed NJTDP's testimony repeatedly. And Section E of NJTDP's emergency order, otherwise known as the EO, states, and I quote, "The township of Roxbury and its contractors shall have full access to the landfill to monitor all hydrogen sulfide control measures, and to obtain test samples for the purpose of environmental monitoring." The wording here is absolutely essential to understand and key to the interpretation of this part of the emergency order. And Roxbury's attorneys should not have dropped this case, and should have been very strongly arguing the following point in court. Roxbury Township and its contractors very clearly are not being allowed full access to the landfill. Roxbury Township and its contractors very clearly are not being allowed full access to the landfill for the purpose of environmental monitoring. The term used here, environmental monitoring, has a legal definition that is expressly different than if the wording were air monitoring or hydrogen sulfide monitoring. It is not those words, it is environmental monitoring. Environmental monitoring, the legal definition, covers a broad range of environmental impacts, not simply air and hydrogen sulfide. It covers the entire environment, from air to soil to water. Environmental monitoring is a continuous process of obtaining information to determine if the parties required or law to control their polluting discharges and emissions are doing so. Roxbury Township's legal representation failed to recognize this or argue that point to Judge Brennan. NJTDP's legal argument was based on this point. They argued that the EO only gave Roxbury the right to information pertaining to hydrogen sulfide. That is not how the wording of the EO reads, or should be interpreted by the court or anyone. Why are you giving this up, and why do you have to return and argue the letter of the law?
Good question. The environmental attorney did argue that specific point. Actually, a copy of the emergency order was attached not only to the mayor's certification that accompanied the papers that were filed, and as well as the brief, but it was also enhanced by a certification that Mr. Zelli provided to the environmental attorney of pointing that exact point out. The judge didn't read it that way. I mean, that's what judges do, they interpret things. And I disagree, I think that was our best shot to get that soil sample. I think the environmental attorney was spot-on. It's unfortunate, we didn't win. You know, why didn't we win when we went up here? Before Judge Wilson, when we could have stopped this, as the gentleman said earlier, right at the beginning. You know, if that judge would have issued the injunction that we asked for back in December, we wouldn't be in this position today, because that whole board would have never came in, the additional whole board. I don't know why she didn't issue the injunction. All I can tell you is, from my experience, doing this type of work for over 25 years in a number of municipalities and a number of landfill cases, that judges are very reluctant to second-guess the DEP, because the DEP is the agency that's chartered by this state to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the residents. So, judges are very reluctant to second-guess their actions. Doesn't make it right, but that's the way it is. That's been my experience.
One last thing, I went to Governor Christie's town hall meeting in Fairfield last week, and I asked him, when you picked me for a question, and I asked him some questions about Fenimore landfill, and I heard someone say up here that he's misinformed, and I truly do not believe that the governor is misinformed on any of these issues whatsoever. He knew exactly what he was doing, and he got up there, and he said things that were not true repeatedly, that this problem was caused by things that were put in that landfill for decades, and that's not true, and that this problem was that people in Roxbury, folks in Roxbury, and he meant the town council in Roxbury, not you, but the council that was here years ago, decades ago, in the governor's own words, decided what would go in that landfill, and that's not true. It was decided by DEP, and it was decided a few years ago, under the material acceptance protocol of MAPS. So, the governor is lying to the public about what's going on here, and that should be on your town's record, which is where I'm putting it right now. The governor's lying about what's going on with this landfill. Why is the governor getting up at his town halls and lying about what's going on with this landfill? What does NJTDP, DEP have to hide? And if you're not helping to get this stuff out of the community, what are you helping to hide?
Eric Markworth, 36 Compton Road, here in Flanders. So, I'm just trying to get some things straight here. Did you guys have access to the ACO prior to this starting? Did the town council have the consent order?
You mean the ACO between SEP and DEP?
Yes.
No.
Now, the Highlands Council did, though, right? Under their process?
I don't know.
You don't know?
I don't know.
Chairman, right? That's Chris's point, chairman, right? Because I know the Sierra Club did not have the ACO.
I had to get information from Jeff, I asked him.
I asked him, he said he didn't have the ACO.
I don't know if he had the ACO or not, but I...
So, I want to know, who knew ahead of time that CND was going to be allowed in and the Highlands Council? Because they had access to it, right?
I have no idea that that's the case.
Along those same points, that the Highlands Council should have known and did not do its duty. There are a lot of statutes in the Highlands Act, and some of them cover redevelopment, some of them cover remediation, but that's the letter in the law of the landfill. That's not an emergency order that was just really nearly crafted. That's state legislature-passed law that everyone needs to respect. So, a couple of those statutes are, any facility that has more than 50,000 gallons of water usage per day in the Highlands region needs special permits. Anything that emits gases needs permits. Any piece of property is not allowed to have any more than 3% of its area that's not water, we're talking ground, be an impermeable layer, which, if you count up the acres of Fenimore, and you count up the acres of this supposedly impermeable geomembrin cap, that's against the Highlands Act. So, you know, the whole point here is, the Highlands Council, and whether Attorney Buco, whether Attorney Brouser, and I actually spoke to Attorney Brouser after last week's meeting, which we missed you at, and I handed him a packet that one of our residents sent to Gene Fail, who is no longer part of the Highlands Council, and Gene Fail reviewed a bunch of those, but it's also been sent to Mr. Paul. And those were refuted, and I spoke with an attorney, because that's where we're getting to here, and we got some legal opinion with those issues. And one of the prevailing issues is, the highest letter of the law regarding the Highlands preservation area is the regional master plan in the act itself. And Part 81K explicitly states, this is plain English, I don't care if you have a high school degree, a college degree, or a legal degree, any real property that's in the Highlands area that's going to be remediated has to go with the regional master plan, it has to comply. Does this remediation comply with the regional master plan?
You have to bring that up with the DEP.
Well, you know, that's your job. Why do we have to pay our money to hire an attorney when you're supposed to represent us?
You just said it was answered by Mr. Paul.
Excuse me?
I said you said it was answered by Mr. Paul.
It was, but then, when we spoke, I've spoken to numerous attorneys, and I've also spoken to a lot of...
I can't interpret what they determined.
So, if you're telling me that if we go to court again, and what you should have done when you argued this last case, under that last case for the temporary injunction on the gas walls, which, as an engineer, I will tell you, those gas walls are probably going to help us come this summer, because it's horrible. But because you agreed to them, and because you said they were good, under the four parts that that judge made his judgment on, you failed one of those... that that judge made his judgment on, you failed one of those points. You weren't aggressive enough. So I'm telling you, under 81K, the Highlands Council has rights, the city has rights, under the legislation that we passed last year, that we went down to Trenton to help pass, that Mr. Tittle was down there, that some of you were down there to help pass, that legacy landfill law gives municipal review. So at the end of the day, we're talking about forever. We're not talking about even five years, seven years, 10 years. We're not talking about money, we're not talking about logistics. I'll share with everybody, I just got my property taxes reduced by a boatload. And you know why? Because I live near that dump. And you know what that means? My property is worthless. Do you know what that means? That's damages. Do you know what that means? That means class action. And guess what? I had a few questions of Mr. Ratz before I moved to this town, and all he told me that I had to worry about was truck traffic. So guess what? It'll be the DEP, it'll be the Highlands Council, it'll be you guys.
That's right.
If this isn't done properly, for the long-term remediation, everyone is going to get to the bottom of this. If you don't do a formal investigation, we're going to pay to do it ourselves.
That's right.
Not to be nothing in effort in all properties, that's our livelihood. This is, I'm a first-time homeowner, that's my home. I'm going to have kids in this community living a half mile from that landfill, not knowing what's coming out of that stack because you guys won't test. I'll tell you, when it comes to paying this bill, you guys better think long and hard who's going to get it.
Who's Judy what? Your name? No, it's all right.
Judy Corvelli for Goff Horse Road. I just have one question. Why was a dump or landfill in Florida that had no similarities basically to Fenimore visited, as opposed to one similar to Fenimore?
No, actually, it was one of the few sites nationally that was compared to Fenimore, and it was used, Mr. Morocco, I believe, brought it to our attention, as a similar site, and Mr. Ratz only went there because he was in the area, there's conflicting information coming from there. So that's the only reason we stopped there, but that has been a site that has been compared similarly, but with less gas than Fenimore.
What are the real similarities? I just saw that as fires and smelting.
If you look on the presentation tonight, there is a chart that shows the similarities and the differences between the facilities. So there are a number of similarities in that approximately degree of material into it. It produced H2S gas. So those are all similarities that are listed in there. So there were some similarities.
But don't think that with that fire and all that was...
Because of different compounds. Those are, yes, there's some differences too, and those are delineated as well.
Great. But aren't they more similar without the fire and all that fire brimstone that you could have visited?
Yeah, well, actually, Mr. Zelli is right. Warren County, right there in Warren County here, has comparable and has similarities as well too, and that was investigated. In fact, Mr. Zelli was head of the project out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.